Lee Summit is your destination for big city vibes and small town charm. Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmers Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee and discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee Summit. I'm Laura and this is your flash briefing for December 9th. City Council meets for regular session Tuesday nights, 6:00 in council chambers and City Hall. Meetings are open to the public or watch live on the city's YouTube channel. If you can't watch, catch the recorded meeting on demand on the YouTube channel or by subscribing to the Council debrief newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. The city wants your valuable input for the architectural and building design standards update. This come and go event will be held at the Gammer Community Center from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. on December 11th with a presentation at 4:30 p.m. We hope to see you there. Did you know Santa was coming to town? To the Lee Summit History Museum, to be more specific. Selfies of Santa will be taking place December 14th and 21st from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the museum, free of charge. All you have to do is take the photo. Oh, what fun. A reminder to Jackson County taxpayers, Lee Summit City Hall is currently unable to process tax payments, print receipts, or create waivers. Taxpayers are advised to visit a Jackson County location or pay online at jacksongov.org. And if you happen to like my scarf, grab one for yourself or a loved one this holiday season at the LS Marketplace, located in the lobby of City Hall. It has great items like Lee Summit branded socks, turbus tumblers, coasters, and more. Show off your Lee Summit pride. It's open 8 to 5, Monday through Friday. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
Have you ever been driving around Lee Summit and wondered, "What's that going to be? What's being built there?" Wow, that went up fast. The Development Minute is here to help, highlighting some of the newest projects in Lee Summit, Missouri. Streets to West Prior is getting another restaurant on the North End. Chicken Salad Chick, a Southern-inspired fast casual chicken salad restaurant, will open next to 30 Hot Bar and Grill, Magic Noodle, and Nick the Greek. The restaurant offers a variety of scratch-made chicken salads, pimento cheese, sandwiches, and more. It is set to open at the end of 2024. Summit Orchards is welcoming Salad and Go, a drive-through restaurant that specializes in salads, wraps, and breakfast. The Arizona-based restaurant sources fresh, natural ingredients for its salads, house-made dressings, and proteins. Salad and Go is set to open in spring of 2025. Summit Orchards is getting Andy's Frozen Custard. The quick-serve frozen custard-only chain offers a wide variety of custard treats like concretes, jackhammers, sundaes, splits, malts, and more. Andy's is set to open in spring of 2025. Craft Putt is coming soon to Summit Fair. The locally-owned indoor mini golf bar and restaurant will feature two custom-designed 10-hole mini golf courses. The space will offer games, food options like tacos, burgers, and wings, and local craft brews. Craft Putt will open by the end of 2024. That's it for the Development Minute. For more about upcoming projects, visit cityofls.net.
Traditionally, we think as police officers, those responding to law enforcement needs within the community. But honestly, we are there to serve our citizens. And our citizens do go into crisis. They do have mental health crises. And we're being called to those scenes on a regular basis. In order to help serve those citizens better, we did initiate the Crisis Intervention Team Program. These are officers that are specially trained to de-escalate crisis situations. Recently, we've brought co-responders onto the scene, licensed, qualified, mental health professionals housed within our police department. And they respond with those officers directly to those scenes where a crisis is occurring so they can interact with that citizen and get them the help they need right there on that scene.
The co-responders are either a bachelor or master level in a behavioral health-related field. They wear plainclothes. They don't carry weapons or anything like that.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day. Listen for, you know, those key words: mental health, behavioral health, crisis.
There's a lot of officers that just call for me. I have my own radio number.
I also have the ability to self-dispatch to them on, say, 982, then route.
Officers in route, 914, armed, drawn, ready.
So typically, I arrive after they've made it safe. I'll make contact and get kind of the rundown, and then I just kind of jump right in.
Like, hey, you know, my name's Allison. I'm a mental health professional. I'm here to help you. I'm not here to take you to jail or arrest you.
Sometimes, all a person needs is a voice, someone neutral, someone outside that, you know, can listen. I do a lot of safety planning, including family, their support network. Who's close to you? If they're home alone, who can come over and hang out with you today? Can we lock away your sharps? Can we put up your meds? Do you need meds? Can we get you over to the urgent care to get you assessed for your medications? Some of them also are like, "Oh, I'm so glad you came. This made me feel so much better."
Our main goal as co-responders is to, one, get people connected to the services that they need and also divert from emergency rooms and jails.
And they almost get a different view of the police responding. That lets me know you care and the officers care.
Lee Summit Police, can we help you?
My husband has...
In 2020, we had 722 mental health-related calls for service. 2022, by that time, 1,479. These mental health-related calls for service are increasing. How we're responding to that is increasing the number of Crisis Intervention Team officers we have available as well as the number of co-responders we have available to respond on these calls.
So what I think is important for the community to know about the co-responder program is that we're here. We exist. All you have to do when you call 911 is ask for us. You know, say, "Hey, I want a co-responder to respond to this crisis," and we'll go. I was really struggling about eight years ago. My personal journey with mental health, and I met some amazing social workers and amazing programs that have helped me get to where I am today. I really couldn't see myself doing anything else. We want to help, and that's what we love to do.
So I had a client, we got her a call. She had some suicidal ideations, and she really felt that she had nobody. And, you know, in getting to know her story, in getting to know who comes around and sees you, well, then we found a support person, and they responded immediately, and we made a plan. I called back and checked on her in an hour, and then I checked on her in two hours. We were able to get her into additional services to where she talks to someone every week or more. I just took a person that really just thought they had nobody, and nobody would show up for them, and showed them, "You do." And you'll be amazed who is in your corner if you just simply say, "I need a little help."
...
Okay, welcome everyone. Sorry for the late start. We had a closed session that we had to attend to, and we have another one afterwards. So if you would please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Lord, please help us make it through this evening with good decision-making, consideration for each other, keeping in mind what's best for our community, for all involved. Amen. All right, before we do the agenda, I need to do some agenda management. I need to remove Agenda Item 10A. This is the Discovery Park Activation. We're gonna, they're not ready for this, so this will be moved to a future agenda. So I need a motion to approve the agenda, less that item. Yes, Councilmember Shields has motioned to adopt the agenda. Councilmember Hodges has seconded discussion.
Mayor, I need to do rule call first.
Rule call?
For everybody present.
Oh, I jumped on that, okay. Can I get a, can I get a call to order first? That would be, it's been a while since I've been here. See, how long's it been? Three weeks? And that's what happens. I call to order the City of Lee Summit Regular Session Number 22. Can I get a rule call, please?
Councilmember Hodges?
Here.
Councilmember DeMaro. Councilmember Pryor.
Here.
Councilmember Shields?
Here.
Councilmember Rader?
Present.
Councilmember Lovell?
Here.
Councilmember Carlisle?
Present.
Mayor Protim Lopez?
Here.
Mayor Baird?
Here. All right, now we have an agenda, less one item, that Councilmember Shields has motioned to adopt. Councilmember Hodges seconded discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please accord the vote. It does pass 8-0, thank you. Next is the approval of the Consent Agenda. I have a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please accord the vote. It passes unanimously, thank you. And then we have Council Roundtable. These are items of general interest, things going on in the community, maybe in your district. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. There's gonna be a couple of different opportunities for pictures with Santa downtown coming up. Thursday evening at Budget Blinds, they're gonna have Storytime with Santa at 5:30. And then this weekend, they're doing selfies with Santa at the Lee Summit History Museum.
Awesome. Thank you. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a new restaurant that just opened today, and I know that I saw the Chamber posted about it, the Chicken Salad Chick. So it's been popular so far. There was a long line, according to the Chamber's pictures. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, looks like we've got some public hearings tonight. So I'm gonna, we're gonna get right into some business. We have, I'm gonna close the regular session, open the public hearing in the matter of Agenda Item 4A. This is a Unified Development Ordinance Amendment to Article 2 pertaining to the expiration and approval of Final Development Plan. City of Lee Summit is the applicant. Would all those wishing to speak to this matter, please rise and be sworn in by the city clerk.
Good evening. Hector Soto Jr., Senior Planner. I'd like to enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 14.
Please enter into the record 1 through 14.
So, in an ongoing effort to identify friction points in different ways in which staff can make improvements to the UDO, to increase efficiencies and to make a more efficient time, use of staff's time, planning commission's time, city council's time, and those of the development community, we've identified and brought forth to you four, well, one amendment composed of, that addresses four different areas in our UDO that we hope will make improvements to our process. All the applicant, all the proposed amendments that we'll be touching on are areas over which we've, there's already some past precedents, and these requests coming before the Planning Commission City Council, and on which they've taken positive action in approving these in the past. So with these efforts, we're kind of tackling some, what we'll call maybe some lower-hanging fruit that you've considered in the past before and have been agreeable to, and we would just be looking to codify some of those items in order to expedite some of our processes. So the first area is the Final Development Plan Extensions. So right now, Final Development Plans, it's an administrative approval process. Once approved, those plans are good for a period of one year, after which, if there's a need to extend that approval, as currently written in the ordinance, it has to come before city council in order to grant that approval through, not a public hearing, but just a, an item that gets brought for your consideration. So with this amendment, what we're looking to do is to somewhat mimic the Preliminary Development Plan process in that it's essentially giving a two-year period. So it'll give one-year approval by right, and then it would give the director or the administrative authority to grant a one-year extension. So here at the end of October, I believe it was October, the meeting of October 27th or so, 22nd, there was, just to illustrate some of the point, there was a Final Development Plan that was brought before you for an extension of an approved FDP for the Lakewood Subdungeon Pool Parking Lot Approval. It was ultimately approved, but it had the one year of life, and they've, in, to use that specific example, they basically needed some additional time to consider some additional costs and maybe some design changes that need to be made to, to address their, their needs. So with this change, what we would do is, we would have the 12 months approved by right, the one year that would be approved with administrative approval, and should there be an additional need or desire to extend that approval even longer, it would then require the, a request to be brought forth to the Planning or City Council for that action to, to occur. The second item has to do with building materials, more specifically metal. So right now, the use of metal is very limited, as currently written in our ordinance. It's restricted essentially to a very minor wool in, the way it's phrased in the ordinance is, in an incidental manner. So we're talking about, by right, you could do it for fascia, for flashing, very, very minor type things, trim. But anything that goes up and beyond that, and where it starts becoming a primary material, it requires Planning Commission City Council action through approval of a Preliminary Development Plan. There are, however, three areas that, at the time the UDO was adopted in 2001, there were three specific areas that we called the specified metal building areas in which you could use those materials, and those are really industrial areas, namely the airport, there is the industrial area of kind of Century Drive, Broadway Drive, and further south behind the Home Depot. And then at the far west end of Victoria Drive, where it meets Main Street, there's an area back there, just south of 470, where it is also a specified metal building area. Again, all those areas are, are industrial in nature, and at the time the UDO was adopted, those were the three areas in which counsel by grant, by approving the UDO, as written, stated that these are the three areas in which, understanding the needs and kind of more the utilitarian aspect of that style of building architecture, where they would grant the use by right of, of metal. But anywhere outside of that can only be done with approval of a Preliminary Development Plan. So, over the past, well, now it's, what, 23 years? Especially in the last five years, we're seeing the evolution in incorporation of metal as a more accepted material outside industrial applications. We've seen in residential construction more, and just your typical commercial construction. Over the past five years or so, there've been about 35 applications that have come before the Planning Commission City Council for the use of metal as a primary material. All of those requests have been granted. So what we're looking to do with that is taking some of the direction from what has been approved and codifying the use of metal as a use by, as a material by right, when they compose a certain percentage of, of the facade, which are reflective of previous approvals. So what you see before you is, under Item Number 6, it basically states that metal that does not exceed 40% of any facade would be allowed by right for use in office, commercial, retail, industrial buildings. And then from there, once you exceed 40%, it gives kind of more of a stair-step approval process, where we would say that up to 75%, it would only require Planning Commission approval. Anything above that, City Council approval. An example of 100% would be most recently, and actually use the elevation here behind you. This would be for the, the new MCC Automotive Facility, Education Facility, where there were certain facades where, I believe on one, it even went up to about 97, 99% of metal material, and it has been, has been approved. Your typical commercial applications that we've seen have been kind of bordering in the 30 to 50% at the maximum. And the most recently, the, the 30-hop building at Streets of West Prior had one facade that was about 40 to 45% use of material on one side. So taking that direction, we've got the proposed language here to, again, help to codify what can be used by right, and the, the different levels that would, would trigger different consideration by the Planning Commission City Council should exceed those standards that were adopted by right, which would be 40%. So with this change, if approved, what it would do is we would eliminate the specified metal building areas, because now we're opening up, it's been shown that the, the community is amenable to the use of metal outside of these three metal, specified metal building areas. So we would delete that area, and just, development would be subject to that standard that was established under, under Item Number 6 here. There's some additional cleanup language here, where we just changed some of the terms where it explicitly gives certain authority to the city council. We just indicate the approving authority just in order to better reflect changes in the UDO, so as not to constantly change that terminology. We just refer to the approving authority, however defined by the UDO. So I guess this, this slide summarizes essentially what it is that we're looking to do. So the first thing would be removal of specified metal building area, codify the allowances that have already been established with the tiered approval system, update the material requirements for industrial buildings, which I guess I can go back and touch on that one a little bit. There is an area under which, let's see. In the, in the past, there's been, no, it's at the bottom here. So with certain materials, there has been a question as to how do we guarantee, with, for example, the use of metal, a baseline as it relates to kind of quality? Because some of the concern might have been, when we say metal, you know, we want to have some minimum standards to the thickness of it essentially, so we can care for, so we can at least regulate some minimum standard of quality. And what we are doing here at the bottom of Paragraph B is indicating that the minimum thickness of this, of the metal panel should be 26-gauge, which is an accepted standard across the industry and other similar, other communities in the area have, have adopted a similar gauge thickness, like in Blue Springs, for example. Modification requests. This particular proposal, the intent of which is to, again, reduce some of the review times and expedite certain processes by establishing the Planning Commission as an authority by which they can review and approve modifications that might be looked at as more innocuous or minor in nature. So right now, the UDO says, any modification to any standard in the UDO requires Planning Commission City Council approval. So with this amendment, what we're looking to do is identify four particular areas in which the Planning Commission has the authority to consider a request for modification and approve it, and thus save going, having to go through the additional step of going, taking a public hearing in front of the, the city council. So in this case, we would just be looking at granting the Planning Commission the authority to review and approve modifications to parking setbacks. One of the areas that, I guess if I were to illustrate the point on that one, would be the most recent applications that have come before you for the Too Quick Trip redevelopments. In both of those instances, what you typically come across when you're running a long development, along MoDOT right-of-way, is that there are excessive amounts of right-of-way that exceed, that exceed what we would typically see along a typical residential street, or a commercial or industrial street. So in either of those cases, the parking lot setback was only maybe in some cases five to seven feet away from the property line, but they were 40 feet away from the travel lane just due to the excessive amount of right-of-way that existed. So with this application, in an instance like that, the, the Planning Commission would have the authority to review and approve that type of modification. In particular, for the, the Quick Trip at Blue Parkway and Third Street, had this particular amendment granting the Planning Commission the authority to review and approve a parking lot setback, there wouldn't have been really a need to go through the entire public hearing process in front of the Planning Commission City Council. It could have just gone, just to an application in front of the Planning Commission, and cut the review time in about six, you know, from six weeks, to make it six weeks instead of the, the normal 12-week approval process. Design standards, one of the items of consideration is RTU screening type. The place you most recent, that you would most see this would be for large, commercial, industrial buildings where ordinance currently says, "All rooftop equipment has to be fully screened from view on all sides by raising a parapet to the height of the units being screened." screened." A lot of our larger logistical buildings do have rooftop unit screening, but it's impractical to provide parapet screening of a certain height along the entire perimeter of those buildings when they're able to achieve a lot of that type of required screening by using kind of more compact, compartmentalized screening methods that don't meet the letter of the ordinance currently written, but they meet the spirit and provide the screening that's required. So this would be an example of an application that would go just to the planning commission for their consideration. The building materials, again, we've identified the stair stepped approval process. So planning commission would be able to review and approve the use of metal from 40 to 75%. The buffering, landscape buffering location allowance, we've recently considered the joint operations facility, and there was the issue of conflict between the locations required for the landscape screening and the presence of utilities. They were able to provide screening by pushing it further south closer to the building itself rather than placing it right at the edge of the property. As currently written, it's very strict in stating that it has to be along the perimeter. In this case, the planning commission would be able to review and consider extenuating circumstances and approve those requests if there's some reason as to why they aren't able to meet the letter of the ordinance. And this puts into verbiage what I just explained here. The last area in which it touches upon is the flood hazard requirements, and the only change here is that currently it reads that basically the homes in any basement have to be elevated two feet above the base flood elevation. So what you're looking to add is more specificity in stating that mechanical, electrical, other utility equipment and appurtenances also have to be two feet above minimum base flood Here this, and this slide just basically goes to outlines what the process is for UDO amendments where staff identifies those needs, we do research, bring it forward to CDC, planning commission has reviewed it and CDC, and they gave their blessing to move forward. So now we're in front of you here with a ultimately a requesting an ordinance be approved to adopt those ordinance amendments. So I'll yield any questions you may have.
All right. Questions from council members? Yes, council member Raider.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I guess I kind of had a question and a comment, but I'll say this. I, on, I tried to go back to the screen where you had the, where you were assigning more things to the planning commission?
That's
Yeah, that one. I think this is great. I think that there may be even more that as time goes on, we vet and that could be assigned to planning commission to continue to expedite and get the permitting process faster for people and encourage our developers and builders to come to Leesum. But I, it's great. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. How much was the, how much was the metal on the library on Colburn? There's a lot of metal on that one.
I don't have that exact number. I can find out.
Bulk of it, wasn't it?
I believe so.
Good looking building.
Yeah.
The one on Outer Road by Todd George, yeah, that one's pretty similar, isn't it?
It is.
Lots changed. Okay. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor, in favor or in opposition to the application? Please come forward. Any additional questions from council? Soto, do you have any further comment? Seeing no further testimony, I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Is there any council discussion on this application? Council member Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. I would second what council member Raider said, that I think it's a great idea to offer some more flexibility here and be interesting to see what else we could do in the future in that vein. I would even continue to encourage us to look at what we can allow folks to do by right if there are variances that we consistently grant. Maybe that should just be the standard, but I think this is going in the right direction, and I appreciate the work. So thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, council member Raider, would you please read bill number 24 dash 212.
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, I move to advance to second reading. I'm sorry, lost my place. Oh, pshaw. Bill number 24 dash 212, an ordinance amending chapter 33, the Unified Development Ordinance, Article 2 pertaining to modification procedures and final development plan extensions, Article 5, Section B pertaining to floodplain overlay districts, Article 7 pertaining to modifications, and Article 8 pertaining to building materials of the Code of Ordinance for the City of Leesum, Missouri.
Thank you. I have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 24 dash 212 by council member Raider, seconded by council member Hodges. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does go to second reading unanimously. So thank you for the presentation and all the work from staff. I'm going to close the regular session again and open a public hearing in the matter of agenda item 4B. This is a vacation of right of way at 101 Southwest Market Street. Wine tier construction is the applicant. Would all those wishing to speak to this matter, please rise and be sworn in by the city clerk? Is applicant going to go first or staff?
Good evening. Claire Byers, Senior Planner. I'd like to enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 16.
Please enter into the record Exhibit A, 1 through 16.
The purpose of this vacation request is to revert the subject portion of excess right of way back to the abutting private property so that Grace Community Church can renovate the existing structures located within that area. The subject portion of right of way effectively constitutes the side entrance and yard of the adjacent property. Portion of right of way that is requested to be vacated does not include any portion of the existing street. The subject right of way is located along Southwest First Street perpendicular to Northwest Market Street. The surrounding area is characterized by commercial as well as both single and two-family residential uses. To the east of Southwest First Street is a parking lot that serves the subject property. The right of way was established in 1865, but only 25 feet of the platted 60 were used to construct Southwest First Street. Private utility infrastructures are located within the right of way to be vacated. However, the utility companies have approved the vacation with the condition of approval retaining a 10-foot utility easement. The Ignite Comprehensive Plan identifies the subject area as within the downtown activity center. The proposed vacation of right of way does not compromise the ability to implement or achieve any policies, goals, or objectives outlined in the comprehensive plan. The subject right of way was dedicated but not utilized in the construction of the street, does not account into any future area road plans, and serves no current or future public purpose. The applicant hosted a neighborhood meeting on October 21st, 2024, and no members of the public attended. No comments have been received by staff. Finally, the application follows the Ignite Comprehensive Plan and the requirements of the UDO. Staff recommends approval of the vacation of right of way with the following conditions outlined here and in the staff report. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from Miss Byers, right? Okay. No questions. This is a vacation of right of way. Is there anyone here that's wishing to speak in favor or in opposition to this application? Please come forward. Anybody? Any additional questions from council? Applicant care to make any further comment? You don't have to, I'm just, it's part of my procedures. Sorry. Yeah. Hearing no further testimony, I close the public, I am closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Is there any council discussion on this application? Seeing no further questions or comments, council member Shields, would you please read bill number 24 dash 213?
Thank you, Mayor. Move for second reading, bill number 24 dash 213, an ordinance vacating a 15.6 foot wide, 140 foot long strip of right of way located along Southwest First Street adjacent to 101 Southwest Market Street in the City of Leesum, Missouri.
Thank you. I have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 24 dash 213 by council member Shields, seconded by council member Hodges. Discussion? I am curious if I said your name right, though, the construction. Oh, wow, I'm impressed. Yeah, I got lucky tonight. All right, seeing no discussion, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It passes eight to zero, goes to second reading. Thank you. All right, going to close the regular session one more time and open the public hearing in the matter of agenda item 4C. This is a rezoning from R1 to RP1 and RP3 and a preliminary development plan. The townhomes of Chapel Ridge 4060 Northeast Ralph Powell Road, Engineering Solutions LLC is the applicant. Would all those wishing to speak to this matter, please rise and be sworn in by the
Mr. Slisht, how are you? Good evening. Matt Slisht, Drink Solutions, 50 Southeast 30th Street, Leesum, Missouri. Come here this evening on a case that we have been working on for quite some time up in the Chapel Ridge development. The site is currently zoned RP3 and R1. The original development started in early 2005 range and over the years has changed. In 2019, we came in and made the change to create the RP3 environment to build some more townhomes in the area as the first phase of them were going exceedingly well. And so since we've done that, we left an extension of the R1 on the westerly side of Chapel Ridge Place. This plan is to come back and revise that zoning. And so what we had done, this is the original plan where we had the townhomes kind of on the easterly side, created some green space and left the single family R1 back in 2019. We came forward and proposed making all of the lots to the east of the existing single family townhomes. We took that to the neighborhood and that came with some very substantial pushback. So we met many times and kind of worked our way through a plan, working back and looking at an option to just putting in the single family lots and seeing what that would look like, and ultimately came to a plan that we think makes sense. So as you look at the existing townhomes, a mixture of uses of stucco and stone kind of throughout the overall development, that area had clay tile roofs and stucco kind of primarily as the initial development standards. We've kind of gone through there over the last few years and kind of upgraded those to add in some of the stone, the mixtures, adding in some asphalt shingle architectural roof. This is the existing single family to the west of us, is that we were kind of trying to match the architectural styles and aesthetics to. And so what we came back and the idea was is to rezone the northerly piece to RP3, but to limit those to two-unit townhomes, create a green space in between the existing single family and our proposed development, and then rework this zoning area that was R1 to an RP1, which allowed us to create an additional green space on the backside. It allowed us to reduce the number of single family homes that are directly behind the existing residences, and the RP1 allowed us to create a single family lot that can be more in character with the maintenance provided area, which all of these units that we're proposing will be, and stay more in character with what we believe is a transition from the estate-style, single-family homes to our townhomes on the easterly side. So we provided an example elevation view of what we believe the single family home will be. It'll be a mixture of two-car and three-car garages, single family or single-story, first floor, 1,400 square foot, basement floors 850, so around generally 2,300 square foot homes, which we think are in character and style generally with what the existing development to the west has and kind of a transition again to the east. And I believe you have one resident here today potentially could speak, but as we kind of work through this, I think they would explain to you that the developer worked very hard to kind of come up with a plan that we feel like meets the needs of the area, provides another product up there that we think will continue to close out that last piece of the Chapel Ridge area. So we will stand for questions.
Okay, we'll do the staff's presentation, then we'll come back to you.
Hector Soto Jr., Senior Planner. I'd like to enter into the record Exhibit A, list of items 1 through 20.
Please enter into the record Exhibit A, 1 through 20.
The request before you is to rezone the three and a third acres that are outlined here in Vermillion from RP, from R1 to RP1 and RP3, with RP3 being at the far north end, as Mr. Slisht had pointed out, and the RP1 will make up the area south of this Sundown You can see that the area in question sits in a transition area between the existing townhome development and zoning, the commercial development to the south, single family, a larger state-sized, single family to the immediate west, and then beyond that would be the villa section that makes up the remaining portion of the property west of the retention This particular slide is just to show you kind of an evolution of the area, you know, from 98 to 2006, this area north of Woods Chapel Road and then area further south off the screen here was basically the home of Chapel Ridge Golf Course. 2006, it was a plan to establish the villas area at the far north area, at the far west end of the development, townhomes at the far east end with estates in the middle. Mr. Slisht had pointed out that in 2019, there was a plan that basically took this portion here that's kind of cross-hatched to extend the boundary of the townhomes. Let's see. So with this application, what essentially happened is that this boundaries, western boundary for the townhomes was pushed out westward to extend the townhomes area and then leaving this middle, single-family, estate-sized area, which still basically makes up this portion here, that would serve as a buffer between the villas portion, the common area, and then as continuing on to the higher density townhomes further east. So with this plan, there are, as has been just mentioned, there'll be two lots at the north end that will allow for single family or one and two, one or two family attached buildings at the far north end, and then there would be seven single-family villa lots on the south end of Sundown Drive. The RP1 zoning allows for a slightly smaller minimum lot size in order to make some of those allowances for the remaining portion of the property to serve as that transitional buffer between the existing estate lots further west and the new development that's just being proposed to the immediate east. So you can see that the width of that buffer varies from south to north. It's generally somewhere about, in this area, it's about maybe 30 feet extending out to probably closer to 50 feet on this north end. So it is, it's a, it's a healthy buffer that helps provide enough area for landscaping to provide that physical and visual buffer between the two proposed land uses. As Mr. Slisht had mentioned, there had been two neighborhood, two meetings with neighbors, and then beyond that, there was also just communication done via email and other means where they were able to work through the initial proposed plan that was a denser product, and they were able to transition to the revised plan that incorporates the more detached single family and then just allowing the attached residential to the far north. So this is a compromise that the area residents and the developer were able to come to in response to some of the concerns that were brought up in the neighborhood meetings. The elevations, Mr. Slisht had pointed out the more the townhome elevations, but this would be more reflective of the elevations for the single-family villa. So you'd be looking at around 2,300 finished square feet, you know, with an additional 400 or so, although this can vary a little bit depending on the specific model that's being constructed on the particular lot. But the materials would be reflective of what's in the area, which is primarily stucco and masonry. There was a desire by the area residents to bring back the requirement for tile roofs, which was part of the original the area residents to bring back the requirement for tile roofs, which was part of the original approval for the development. And with the two thousand nineteen plan, I believe, or no, a more recent plan, application from that, there was a request by the developer to allow for the use of composition roofs, which was approved, but the neighbor, some of the existing neighbors, as part of this process voiced their desire to reintroduce the requirement for tile roofs, and the applicant is agreeable to that. So, these will be the partial elevations of the townhomes that Mr. Schlitz mentioned. You know, again, with these buildings, they would also bring the requirement for tile roofs to bring that consistency with some of the earlier models of homes that were constructed in the area. As it relates to the Ignite Comprehensive Plan, the area in question was already identified as more residential two, which is more of your higher-density attached detached single-family as well as more attached three and four-unit type of structures. So, the proposed development is consistent with the Ignite Comprehensive Plan in that regard. There are three conditions of approval and to help, I guess, ease any concerns that area residents might have regarding the nature of the two RP three lots at the far north end. Condition number three, bring some specificity to it and indicating that either a single-family residence or an attached two-family residences can only be constructed on those far two-north ends. And then, again, they wanted some assurance that the concrete tiles roof that the developer was amenable to would in fact be a condition of approval, so that is written into condition number three as well. So, with that, I'll yield to any questions you may have.
All right, questions? So, can you go to the, yeah, there we go. Fourteen, there's four duplex lots. Can you point to those, Mr. Soto?
duplex lots would be these two lots at the far north end.
Those are all... All single-family?
All of these are single-family, so the RP one zoning would only allow these lots here to be developed as single-family. The zoning up here, RP three, would give the option of either, they could be single-family, but no more than two-family.
Right, right, right. Okay. Very good. Councilmember Prior.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering if you could tell me who the developer is?
It's Kevin Higdon, I believe. Kevin Higdon is the developer.
Okay, thank you. And then, was there a meeting held with the residents on these lots that are already established for this time? And I don't, I don't recall. Did a lot of people show up this time or no?
My notes were, there were twenty-one members of the public that attended the neighborhood meeting. So, all notice was sent out to everyone within three hundred feet of the boundaries of here. So, it would have gone to established residents on the townhome side as well as the estate, single-family lot side.
And what did they, what were their concerns?
Yeah, and I was gonna say, I mean, so we had, let me go back. We'd given some notes on our here slide. So, we held a neighborhood meeting, well, we had a board meeting, so with the HOA board members kind of started with, and then we had a neighborhood meeting with a group of them. Initially, the meetings we had were talking about putting townhomes directly behind the single-family. Very quickly realized that that was not the direction they wanted to go. We then started having a lot more meetings specifically with individual, one of the individuals that spoke at the planning commission meeting, he then went back and kind of worked back and forth with the HOA to kind of come up with the plan that's presented today. So, I think initially, we had a lot of pushback because of the townhome idea. I think we've reached this point. I think everyone, and I think even in the planning commission packet, you'll see there's a signed sheet that he had done. It's nothing official technically, but I think he had like twenty-one of the twenty-three residents that had said they are fine with this plan, single-family on that backside. So, I think we've worked from where we had a number of them that were against it to where at the end of it, I think that a majority of them were in line with, okay, with that idea.
Okay, thank you. And are these going to be owner-occupied or are they?
Correct, they're all for sale.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, not seeing any other questions. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this application? Please come forward.
Aiden Nguyen, six oh eight northeast Sundown Drive. I'm the last house there that's gonna be beside the duplexes. So, the very, on the very corner of it. And everything that's been said is absolutely correct. We had a couple of people that weren't completely convinced that this was the right way to go, but most everybody is. So, that's really all I needed to say, I think, is just that I wanted to reiterate that we are good with it.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you coming. Any else? All right, any additional questions from the council? Mr. Slisht, any further comment? Seeing no further testimony, I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Is there any council discussion on this application? Councilmember Prior.
Thank you. I just think that this is needed. I recently received an email of a lady looking for maintenance-provided, single-family homes, so I'm excited for this. Thank you. And thank you for listening to the people that live there and accommodating them.
Thank you. Further comments or discussion? Seeing none, Councilmember Lovell, would you please read bill number twenty-four dash two-one-four?
I move to advance the second reading, bill number twenty-four dash two-one-four, in ordinance approving rezoning from District R one, single-family residential to District RP one, planned, single-family residential and RP three, planned residential mixed-use, and a preliminary development plan for the townhomes of Chapel Ridge on approximately three point two-nine acres of land located at forty-sixty northeast Ralph Powell Road, all in accordance with the provisions of Chapter thirty-three Unified Development Ordinance of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-four dash two-one-four, by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It passes unanimously and goes to second reading. Thanks for investing in Lee Summit. All right, next we have public comments. We have a public comment portion where you can address counsel on any matter listed on the council agenda or directly related to the operations of the City of Lee Summit. Each person gets three minutes. I believe we have one person here tonight. Yes, Mr. Winburn. Oh, he spoke for the public hearing, didn't he? Very good. No? No, here he is, right here. Chris Winburn.
Mayor Baird, members of the city council, thank you for your time. I'm here today as a father, as a downtown resident, and as a Lee Summit property owner to express deep concern regarding the proposed closure of Lee Summit Elementary School. This decision, if implemented, would have far-reaching consequences for this community. The R seven district office proposed closure is sudden, abrupt, and deeply troubling. We've witnessed a series of shifting proposals from the district office, from promised renovations to a repurposed site to now recommending an outright closure with no plans or bond money for our school. And this is despite years of community input and investment. What began years ago as renovation planning has swiftly changed in the last four weeks to a complete school closure. Enrollment at LSE is growing, and surrounding investment in the downtown community is rising, but now, this hurried proposal to cram students together to create the densest elementary school in the district is both confusing and alarming. We understand the primary responsibility for this decision lives with the R seven school district, and we've been actively engaged in discussion with the Board of Education and the district office. But we have also noticed a lack of engagement and direction by members of this city council. After multiple open meetings and appeals to visit with your constituents and others voicing sincere concerns about this neighborhood, I'm here to ask tonight for your support. Our community needs your input. What are we asking for tonight? And those are two things. We respect for the request that this council address the district's hurried approach. We also ask the district, I'm sorry, we also request this council prioritize more deliberate and transparent decision-making process that involves collaboration with the surrounding LSE communities. The future of our school, our community, and that it serves depends on it. Thank you for your time tonight.
All right, thank you. We have a couple of presentations tonight. These are not public hearings. These are presentations, so they are basically conceptual. The first one is a conceptual economic development incentive request from T and W Steel, request for tax abatement for the facility expansion at sixteen zero one southeast Hamblin Road. TW Steel Company would be the applicant, but it appears that Mr. Bushak's gonna start it off and then we'll go to Mr. Peterson.
Yes, sir. David Bushak, Chief Counsel of Economic Development and Planning. Your introduction was essentially what I was going to start with. This is a conceptual presentation. You're providing non-binding feedback. You've been through conceptual presentations many times, but I just wanted to start by reminding you. And we'll start with the developer's presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Nice to see everybody. The overview for the night is to talk about who the applicant is, what's this company do, the proposed project on the site, this new construction project, the requested public incentives for your consideration and feedback tonight, and then lastly, always ending with what's in it for the city. Why is this a good thing or not for the city? So, starting with the applicant, the applicant is the T and W Steel Company. It was founded in the city back in nineteen eighty-three, and then I will point out Kenny Rush, the owner, sitting back here, that's here with us tonight. They are looking to expand in their, from their current facility. They're currently at sixteen twelve southwest Jefferson in the facility, just their, it's a great problem to have. They're doing, they're doing really well, need more space and just better space for their manufacturing process. They fabricate and shear steel and other metal and other related services. I hear quality jobs ever since I've been coming here a really long time. There's actually a council person that you may remember that used to say quality jobs every single council meeting. So, if he's listening, this is a great one. So, we have quality jobs here. Just to give you a little, not to go through names of people at the company and things like that, but just to give you a sense and confidence about the company you want to keep, I'm confident you want to keep in Lee Summit. So, there's about thirty-plus jobs there now. If you look at the kind of the leadership level, the executive level and salespersons, you're talking about one range of the eighty to hundred thousand and then a number of six-digit jobs. Also, going down to project leaders, you're talking about sixty thousand plus, and then strong wages down at the labor level as well. So, this is a company founded here that wants to stay here, that has quality jobs, and they want to grow. I will just say this, when I met Kenny and he came and just told me a story. He said, I'm in Lee Summit, I like Lee Summit, I'd like to stay in Lee Summit, but gosh, the brokers are showing me sites. I'm gonna go build a building somewhere that fits my company. And started naming off cities and naming off different incentives that brokers were telling him about. But I said, Kenny, do you like Lee Summit? I gotta understand. So, it's like intake, right? Do you like Lee Summit? Would you like to stay in the area? Well, yeah, but I wanted to make sense for the company. And I was really glad that I was able to show him the economic development policy, and then I'll get to it in a minute, that it's in an LCRA. It's exactly what the city designed its economic development policy for, and specifically LCRA. So, I thought that was a good, feel-good story, that that's how it's supposed to go, right? We want to try to keep our growing, successful Lee Summit businesses that have quality jobs. So, let's talk about what the project is. The project location is in the Newbury Landings development, which is, we are east of two ninety-one South and we are south of fifty, so in that quadrant. And we're specifically right off on the east side of Hamblin Road there. It's twenty-eight acres, which is outlined in red. What we want to do on that piece of land is, and if I didn't just say it, I think I said it, but to be clear, this is, if you recognize Newbury Landings, this is kind of the south side. It has a, I call it a cul-de-sac, that kind of goes up north there. And so, this is down to the southeast part of that. And what they, what Kenny wants to do there is build a approximately fifty-three thousand square foot industrial building. You can see our site plan on the screen. Blue is the building. And that's at a cost of a total investment of about, overall, for the project, about six million dollars plus. And we were just sitting back there talking. He's like, it's getting a little more expensive. And I said, that always happens. I hope it doesn't get too much more expensive. But six million dollars plus is what's planned for the overall project. Now, I made reference to the LCRA from the economic development policy. This entire business park is in an existing LCRA, and the request specifically, the two pieces of the LCRA are sales tax exemption on the construction materials for the project, and then also a ten-year property tax abatement. That would be a seventy-five percent abatement, which means a twenty-five percent payment of lieu of tax, which is what you see over in that far right column on the screen. Just for context, I think maybe Mr. Bushak will talk a little more about this, but to the far end of this business park, there's a similarly sized project that was built in the industrial park called High Tech Solutions, and that's had the exact same request as this. So, just kind of, I know we like to compare and see what we've done in the past. I always put this slide up just so you get a sense. Looking at the yellow is the bottom line for the sales tax exemption, modeled out about a hundred thousand dollar savings for the overall project. Lee Summit's piece of that is about a fourth of it, which you can see in those bottom two yellow figures there. Again, always end what I think is probably the most important to the decision-makers, the elected officials, which is, well, what's in it for the city and the taxpayers? So, the first piece is just to look at, well, flat-out property tax generation. Today, this overall acreage generates a hundred and sixty-four dollars annually in property taxes. During the proposed ten-year LCRA property tax abatement, the annual amount, this changes, goes up during the period, but it's about twenty-two thousand dollars a year, with a total during the ten-year property tax abatement payment to the taxing jurisdictions of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. After the ten-year period, there's, for the, if you look at the next ten years, I kind of like to do that, so we got the ten years of property tax abatement. The next ten years after that are expected to be taxes paid of over a million dollars to the taxing jurisdictions. Other value propositions for the city, one would be job creation. Kenny admitted to me that this is conservative. He thinks over time we'll definitely have more, but can confidently say he's looking at six new full-time equivalent jobs for the facility. And again, retaining, not going to another city, retaining the thirty-plus jobs we have here today. In terms of what I stated as the multiplier effect, what I'm thinking about is when we talk about all the workers there that need to eat lunch, that buy things on the way into work, on the way out of work in Lee Summit, all the truck drivers that come in and make stops at C stores and restaurants and other stores, all those things are generating sales tax and just helping the Lee Summit businesses that are here today. So, that's the multiplier effect, the spread the love. Also, all those workers that live in there, then, I don't know the exact number, but there are workers, as Kenny and I were talking, that are workers that live in Lee Summit. So, some of them are residents here, and obviously, that also helps the tax base for the city. The last item I put down as a, something for you to consider as a value add for the city is sales tax. This is a business that when they sell, not all of their sales are subject to local sales tax, but a lot of them are. So, that generates, when they do better, it generates more sales tax for the City of Lee Summit. So, with that, if there's any questions you have for Kenny or for me, we'd love to answer your questions about the company or the project, but we appreciate the feedback you'll give us tonight, which will guide us for next steps, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bushak? Yes?
Go to my slides. All right, I will provide a summary on behalf of the city for you. I have my usual analysis. I will walk through this request and some of the data that I will be providing to you here. This is similar to what you just saw from Mr. Peterson. Zoom in a little bit. So, we start with analyzing the incentive requests from a timing standpoint. During the construction period, they're requesting the sales and use tax exemption on construction materials, and then for ten years, real property tax abatement in the amount of seventy-five percent. And then, these numbers essentially... And then these numbers essentially back up what Mr. Peterson just described to you. The current taxes are very nominal, little tax coming into the city, and then with this proposal, the pilots during the first year would be this amount, and the city's benefit is in green, and then over the ten-year period, you have this calculation in the city's benefit. This then describes the value of the incentive request to the developer, and as Mr. Peterson said, it's about six million, a little more than six million with costs rising. And so, analyzing the two incentive requests, the value of the sales tax exemption to the company is about a hundred and nine, a hundred and ten thousand, which is one point eight percent of the total project cost, which is just about right compared to all the other projects that you've approved this incentive for, about the same, it's usually in the range of one point seven to two percent. And then the net present value of the property tax abatement is about four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, which is seven point five percent, so the total incentive package is less than ten percent, which is at the lower end, lower to middle end of the range that you've approved for similar projects in the past. And then at the bottom, we have the impact to the city, the twenty-four thousand dollars in lost sales tax revenue from construction materials, but then Mr. Peterson did mention, and I haven't quantified, what the sales tax would be from the actual sales, the taxable sales at the property, which would presumably offset some of all of this over time. And then the real property tax abatement impact to the city, as we've talked about in the past, the city's portion of total property tax bill is about seventeen percent every year, flex weights a bit, but this number's about seventeen percent of the, the total impact from the abated taxes. Then this next page is, this is the simple summary that I provide to you, so you have a clean understanding of what the incentive is. Both of the incentives are through the LCRA, and the property's already in the existing LCRA that the city council created back in twenty twelve, twenty fourteen. So, you got the sales tax exemption and the real property tax abatement matching the numbers that I just showed you. And then this last slide that I have, this is the, one of those walls of data that I present to you from time to time, but there's actually a story here, I think. So, so this page is, you've seen this before, this is the sampling of large-scale industrial projects in the region that we've talked about in the past. The first iteration of this chart that I showed you back in twenty-one or twenty-two, when we first considered the first large-scale industrial project for the city, was only the white projects. And so, I have updated this table for you as time has gone on, and the yellow, those are the new projects that we've added since the first time you saw this, and then the green, those are the Lee Summit projects that you have approved since the first time that you've seen this. So, you see that obviously Lee Summit is definitely in the industrial world now with these incentives that you provided. And so, this walks through all the incentives, and you've seen, you've had me summarize this for you before, the summary at the bottom. The average abatement duration for industrial projects is about nineteen years, the average abatement during the first ten years typically exceeds ninety percent, and then during the years eleven through twenty, it's about fifty percent with some fluctuations based on the specifics of all these projects. And then the last thing that I will note is this item at the very bottom, the K and R wholesale, you most recently approved this a couple of months ago, and typo on my part, this, this is not accurate down here, it's a hundred percent for five years, not seventy-five percent for years one through ten. That was the original request, and I think I looked at the wrong sheet when I put this on here, so I wanted to correct that for you. But, the request that you're seeing tonight is roughly the equivalent of, of all of the incentives you've approved, the city council's approved for the industrial projects, this is at the lower end, it's only ten years, and it's, it's not as large as some of the abatement packages you've approved for industrial projects in the city. And then obviously, the last thing that I'll mention is, and I can go through this if you'd like, there's a number of points in our economic development policy that this project would support, and obviously, business retention and expansion is one of the most important, and we see that with industrial development. So, like I said, this chart, it's, it's a lot of data, but I think it starts to tell a story. We started with the white, we've added the yellow, and now we've added the green, which are Lee Summit projects, and this is another one presented for your consideration. That concludes my initial discussion.
All right. Mr. Elam, go ahead.
Mayor, Members of the Council, thank you. Ryan Elam, Assistant City Manager. I just wanted to add two more points on process, and with this particular project and projects like this. So, we're the conceptual presentation, because the request is slightly above our threshold in our economic incentive policy, whereas the K and R wholesale that you saw, that was right in line, but it's not out of line with our previous projects, as been shown by the, the data here. The other item that I wanted to mention is that this is in a planned industrial zoned area, so with that, there is no preliminary development plan requirement. So, depending upon the feedback from the council here, the only item to come back to the city council would be the implementation documents associated with the LCRA redevelopment plan. Just wanted to make that clarification.
Would you, since you're here, before you go sit down, so that you can, and you can double-tag team this, but, to answer it, but can you tell the history of this location, the Newberry? Because it's been, it sat stagnant for quite some time, and it does, can you show the LCRA map first? Because that's what the whole purpose of the LCRA map was for, is for this type of area in our community.
Let me see.
Sorry, I didn't prepare you for that.
Nope, no, no problem at all. If I could.
And just, when I say this what it was designed for, can you explain what that means?
Yeah, you can put it in right there. My microphone right there. Okay, as, as we pull the, the LCRA up, you know, the LCRA was kind of restarted, you know, back at one point, but the, the point of the LCRA was to have a, I'll say, a ready-made tool available, was to have a bit of a ready-made tool available for these projects specifically. This, this area, the Newberry Landing area, it was developed over fifteen years ago or so, with some infrastructure, almost, probably almost twenty years at this point, and, and it sat there with, with no activity on it. And then, this tool has been, this is the area that we're talking about specifically, it's been utilized for, this is the HT Solutions, let's see if I can zoom in on this.
You can just go to another map if you want from the presentation.
I'm not sure if we have another map.
Fine, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. But, yeah, so this is the, you can see just from this area that, that this aerial, which was two thousand and fourteen, roads are in, there's no development down in this area, but HT Solutions has gone in, Mar Building Solutions is over in this area, Higden Construction is in this area, and then most recently, the K and R wholesale will be coming as well. And this is the remainder of this area here, where this project is proposed. There is one project in this area, Resto Mod, that, that came in without the use of incentives, but in large part, the establishment of the LCRA to help the smaller projects along with a goal of job creation has really kicked off, or I guess, done the purpose of incentivizing this area to ensure that job growth occurs and development occurs in this area as was originally intended.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Carlisle.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have, well, first I have a couple of questions and a comment, but first of all, you said there's gonna be six new hires there, possibly more. Do you know yet what that average salary might be for those six new hires?
Did, we, we broke it down, and again, this could vary a little bit, it's a, it's a projection, but the six, we were looking at approximately one project lead in the sixty thousand plus, one salesperson in the eighty thousand plus, and four laborers in the, we do that usually per hour, twenty-two dollars per hour, full-time equivalent.
That's with benefits and all of that stuff included, right?
That's right.
Great, thanks. And then, just aside from that, where they're currently at now, what are they gonna do with that building? Are they just gonna sell it? Are they gonna keep it and use it as something else? Okay. All right, well, thank you for bringing this to us, I, I really appreciate you guys wanting to stay in Lee Summit and giving us a chance to keep your business here. We do like our businesses to stay. So, thank you for helping them bring this forward, and
Pleasure.
I would just say that I, I think this looks good to me. Nothing is very, stands out that's concerning to me, with the exception of staff gets to do all the rest of the work. I don't know if I like that or not, but that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Carlisle read my mind and already asked my questions. I would also be supportive of this. You know, we talk all the time about how we don't just care about bringing new businesses, but we want to keep and, and encourage existing businesses to expand, and they've been here for over forty years and been part of our community, and I think it's great that we can do something to help them stay and grow and bring new employment opportunities, so I would be supportive. And the only point where I would disagree with Councilmember Carlisle is, I think it's great if staff can figure all this out and not, and just, just make sure it meets our codes and get it done. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mayor Potem Lopez?
Thanks, Mayor. I think my council colleagues read my notes, I think it's exactly what I wrote down. So, I won't repeat what they've already said, but we do appreciate you all being here and wanting to continue to invest in this community, and as me personally, I would also be in favor of supporting this, this request in, in the way, in the manner that it's been presented, and what she said was act, very accurate. Economic development should not always be about recruiting new businesses, it's about retaining, retaining those that want to be here. So, so thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you, Mayor. I know you're looking for feedback, so I just wanted to say that I am in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hodges?
Yeah, same. Short and sweet, just want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues as well. Thanks for staying here, we appreciate you investing in our city. I too am in favor of this as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Lovell?
I just think it's encouraging to see an existing business want to stay, grow, and using this mechanism to do that, whereas a lot of times, we're incentivizing speculative real estate deals and hoping people come. So, I think, again, like anything we can do to, to, to keep our businesses here and use these incentive tools, not for a real estate play, but for a business that's already here is great. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Reader?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I think I'm just gonna agree with everybody else. I, T, TW Steel has been around a long time, and I used to have a client work for them, I think they're a really good company, and I'm glad that they're gonna stay here with us, and we hope that they'll continue to expand. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I, I think my, I'll try to give a little different perspective, also in support, because I've been up here six and a half, almost seven years now, and I remember when I first became mayor, we would get wind of a business leaving our community, and we would always get wind of this too late, where they had one foot out the door, and then all of a sudden, we were scrambling for an incentive package to take to them, and Mr. Bushak was like, "Well, I mean, it's not the way it's supposed to work. They're supposed to come to us to ask for an incentive request, and then we decide whether or not it, it meets our parameters." So, I feel like we've come a long way in seven years with regard to, at least we have some parameters that we're showing, right? Mr. Peterson, you're following them and looking at them saying, "Well, this is pretty much close to their guidelines, this is on the bottom of their, the total incentive request, lower end that they've done before, but the key is, we've established a pattern like you're, like you've pointed out with your spreadsheets, but just as importantly is, we've sent a message that we do want to keep our businesses, because we didn't keep those businesses. All that work that, I mean, I was running to meet one-to-one with a business owner on the city council's behalf, and I didn't have enough, I didn't have any, enough credibility to get it, to get them to stay. And so, we lost some good ones years ago, and sure, we backfilled those buildings with other businesses, but that's just not the message we want to send, we want to keep that business and then backfill the, the, the building that they are leaving. So, if you're, if you're hearing a theme up here, it's because we've, some of us have really thought about this, and we don't want to act, act like we don't care about the businesses that are here in our community, so you got a pretty good chance, Mr. Peterson. Do you want to make anything, any further comment?
Nothing.
All right. Then I'm gonna move on to the next presentation. Thank you for bringing that forward and for investing in Lee Summit. We have a presentation, this one's actually me, isn't it? Oh, okay. Goodness.
Yes, yes, Mayor, this one?
I haven't really been on my game tonight.
I'm, I'm here to help.
I'm here, thank you, 'cause I need to get on my game. Next week, we are going to meet with the planning commission, and we are gonna do it a little different, we're going to have a little bit more discussion, because we're gonna bring a facilitator in, right, Mr. Elam? And the facilitator is a design expert, urban, he's architecture, urban design expert. But we're in suburbia, we're not necessarily urban, but we're talking about metal buildings tonight, that's a interesting change over the last ten years, right? And they'll talk to us about more, and so I sent the council an email and said, "Hey, just be prepared tonight for a little discussion," so that we can simply give this facilitator some thoughts to come in here, because this facilitator wants to take the entire night. He wants to talk for four or five hours, and I said, "No." I'm like, "No, we can't handle it, that's not what we do as a city council, we gotta squeeze him down and say, 'Here's what we want to talk about,' as a city council." And because, I'm telling you, he's, he, where's Hector? Hector leave? He can out-talk Hector. So, I am telling you, he can get into the weeds, and we need to give him more parameters. So, when it comes to the planning commission, I've asked Commissioner and Chair Donnie Funk to do the same with the planning commission, so there, he's gonna ask him on the planning commission this week to do the same thing. So, I need a little bit of guidance, and if you all want to just punt this to John Lovell and let him tell everybody what he wants to see, he's got some pretty high standards, so we have to, we have to kind of like balance this out a little bit, so. So, yeah, I mean, we all, we already know bury all the power lines, we get that, but this is design standard, so this is about the exterior of the buildings, right? Exterior of the buildings, for the most part here. So, I was gonna ask you, and Mr. Elam, did I do okay, or do you want to add to that?
Yeah, you did, you did great. The thing I will add is that the facilitator's name is Chris, with Confluence Architecture, and design, urban design firm, they are gonna be, they, they've been hired to help us revamp our design standards in the UDO. So, we had some minor edits and everything that we went over this, the, earlier this evening. This is really a, a deeper dive on all of those building exterior architectural requirements for, really focused on commercial and office and industrial, and then a slightly different take on single-family based off of best practices in the industry as a whole. And so, what we're asking to do tonight is to have an open dialogue and conversation, as, as brief as you, as you want to make it, or as detailed as you want to make it, so that the, the consultant will come back and have that live feedback data to kind of help shape the conversation with both groups.
Okay. So, I have just, really just two questions, but about each product, okay? So, the, so for example, when we're looking at commercial retail, which we have actually done a bit of, quite a few approvals on the last few years, what architectural design, when it comes to retail, car, commercial, what are examples of specific buildings that you like or don't like? What would you like to see more of, or what would you like to see less of?
No more parking lots.
She says, "No more parking lots." Is that, is that part of the exterior, Mr. Elam? Okay?
Yes, it is.
So, the key, though, is to have the right amount of parking lots, don't you think?
Yeah.
'Cause an engineer
It's always an interesting conversation. That's, that's a very interesting conversation, and
We want to talk parking lots, though, you need to tell Chris that we need to talk parking lots. That's a good point.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Reader?
I've been looking at pictures.
Good.
Can I bring pictures?
Yeah, well, would you, yes, you can, you can, but I would forward them to Ryan Elam, and he'll forward them to Chris.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Councilmember Carlisle said she forwarded some to Mark Dunning already.
Hand it in to me.
Yeah, that's good. I get picky about the parking lots on the residential stuff, that's when I get picky.
Oh, now I get it.
Well, and I think that we like parking lots, if it's possible, you know, behind the building, if it's possible, but it's not always possible. Okay, Councilmember Shields? Oh, I lost somebody.
Hi. So, one, getting rid of parking minimums, I'm all for, that, you know, a business can decide on their own how many spaces they need to accommodate their folks. I guess I, I'm generally the mindset that if, if it's safe, you know, it's meeting building codes, if it's got adequate infrastructure to serve it, you know, in terms of drainage and streets, I want to let folks design, you know, according to their own standards, according to what their business needs, according to what they think their customers need. And so I guess, just kind of coming at this from a just different angle, that I'm more for relaxing a lot of this and letting folks make decisions about what to do on their own properties. So I'm interested in the discussion, but just generally, I'm more for cutting back rather than adding to.
Okay. Could be a good debate next week. Councilmember Pryor, you were going to say something?
I was, but then I changed my mind. But I mean, I can't, I, I, the parking lot issue, I do like potentially more parking garages or behind the building parking lots. I don't know about, so parking minimums, I don't know. I don't like when I pull into Summit Fair, there's never any parking there. So I am big on, I like parking lots, because I don't like not having anywhere to park. But, um, yeah, I think a lot of the apartment buildings in other cities, they utilize a lot of parking garages and things that you just don't even see them. You see the apartments, and I feel like that's one of the reasons that our apartments, some of our apartments are so noticeable, is because they just have a huge parking lot around them. So I think that that would, I don't know.
If I remember, I, this fellow, what's Chris's last name?
Klein, I believe.
He's, he's probably going to make the case to us that what, he's going to talk to us quite a bit about parking lots, I think, don't you think?
I think if, if we give him direction, we'll talk about it.
Yeah, because he's going to also point out, you know, how walking trends and things of that nature, and it'll be interesting. Councilmember Hodges? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Pryor, you good?
Yeah, I think, I think walking is important, but I also think that in order to do walking trends, we need sidewalks in downtown. But I guess we can go over that maybe next week. Did you say next week?
Yes, next week.
Yeah, next week.
But what I meant by walking is he's going to talk about parking and walking distances and how it's deceptive, but...
Oh, well, yeah, like the whole, like Walmart, well, yeah, the whole Walmart thing, like if you, people don't want to walk downtown to a store, they don't want to park in the parking garage because of the walking distance, but they're going to park at the end of the parking garage and, at Walmart, yeah, not parking garage, parking lot, yeah, that is. But also sidewalks are another thing I'd like to talk about. I know that's not building.
And I do, I do park as far away as possible.
I do too, unless it's at dark.
At Walmart, because my, because it used to aggravate my kids. But that's why I did that.
I do, but not, only if it's light out. Or Target has security, so I don't mind walking in the Target parking lot, but thanks.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hodges.
I was just going to say, so something that I've noticed going into, whether it be Overland Park or wherever, is that even something, like a business like a fast food joint, like Taco Bell or KFC's, some, you just, you know, there are the fast food stuff that you don't think of a nicer dining. I will drive by and I'm like, "Wait a second, that's a KFC or that's a..." Because they don't look like the normal ones that we have. And so I'm thinking, "Well, why don't we require," or, or, I don't know how that works, but why don't we have them do their brick facades and stuff that make it look nicer? So it's like, we have a Taco Bell, whatever, but it just looks like a classier one. And so it just really stands out to me. Like, I'm noticing this thing, these things as I go to other cities, and it's just like, that, that's a good look. It's just, it just is very classy with something that some people go, "Oh, we don't want one of those." But if it looked like that, I don't think anybody would care, and it's kind of nice to just have them around and then just look nicer if they're going to be around. So that's just something that sticks out to me.
Good, thank you. Councilmember Lovell.
Okay, here I go. So I'll keep, because you're only asking for a couple things, but I think I'll just kind of do a broad overview of kind of what, based on just kind of my thoughts. The first thing I would say is like, if you think about like the area that attracts the most people, that is desired, that people want to be at, and that really is the gem of the city, you take Downtown Lee Summit. And you think this is probably, I mean, I'm sure they didn't have a bunch of planning and zoning, it was the epicenter of all commerce and where people worked, and it's basically some cross streets and brick buildings and, but it is where we want to go, right? And it's really human-centric and less, kind of less vehicle-centric, which is what kind of our modern development has turned into. And that's where we get the big parking lots, the big box and things like that. So I think of places I desire to be, it's right here. And so I don't think as a city, like in the vast land that we have and, and all the development that's coming, that it's going to be possible to make everything be created this way. But I do think there is a movement, and I think that there are a lot of people that are, that are wanting more boutique, that are wanting more local. And what we've seen in the past development has been big box, big chains that fit a real estate model. And while they're fine, over time, I think they just, they don't lack, they kind of lack character or excitement. And I could name a lot of different, I think Summit, is it Summit Fair that's, or Summit Woods, I get, I get those confused, like Summit Fair is where Dick's Sporting Goods is.
Yes.
And you could see that they tried to create some of that with their architectural design and the parking. And I know you'll hear from developers all the time, is like, "Well, we're Midwesterners, and we want to park right there and walk right into our, our deal." But I think if I were to say like a certain material or anything like that, I mean, I think you can't ever go wrong with brick. You can never go wrong with retail on the bottom and either residential office up front. I don't think, I think making smaller roadways and things like that are helpful. I think there's a public side to this, too. I think in how we decide our streets and our roads, the light posts that we use. I would love to see us implement more roundabouts. There's a lot of great benefits to roundabouts, safety, human prioritization. I've got a long thing here, but, you know, connected sidewalks and trails, walkable business districts, village-style design. I mean, if you go to some of these cities, like if you think of, like, Councilmember Hodges was just in Italy, and I'm not saying we could recreate that, but like Carmel, Indiana really took Italian villages and said, "How do we recreate that there?" And if you walk through there, like the intentionality with how we do a new thoroughfare, and you hear me talk about power lines, and maybe we can't bury them, but maybe we can push them off, and maybe we can raise them up, or we can minimize it, maybe we're using brick instead of stamped concrete. So I just think of more landscaping in our roundabout areas and things like that. So I just think of kind of beauty and like this, this human-centric and less car-centric model. And then how do you do that? And so it talks a lot, too, about like structured parking, underground parking. You're going to put a lot of burden on developers to do that. A big developer is not going to want to come in. It's going to be hard, they, they want that box store, they want to put the Starbucks in it, it's an A tenant, and they want to go. Well, I'd rather have more libations, and I'd rather have more, you know, whistle stop and frost coffee. It doesn't always work, right? It's a riskier investment. Like if I'm a, if I'm a developer, like, you know, I can get this tenant that I know is going to pay, or I could take a flyer on the mom and pop. So I just think we've got a really good opportunity, and maybe we identify some areas, and we can kind of master plan and lay those out with some design elements and features, and then say like, "Hey, here's the incentive mechanism that we're going to have to use to make this work in pencil, but we're okay doing it, because we know long-term it will be better." And so to say I have those answers or I know what that looks like, I think any sort of brick or stone or masonry or anything like that, I think is going to stand the test of time, as you see in Downtown Lee Summit, landscaping, things like that, anything that we can do to kind of lift it up and create those opportunities for the mom and pop businesses and for more independent business owners to do. Because I do think there, it'll take some time, but I do think there's this movement where getting back to like local ownership and business is kind of the heart of what made this country so great and what made this city so great and really what lifted it up to be what it is today. So I've got a whole thing here, but I don't know what I can give to the, that presentation, but maybe I could send some of these ideas to you, and that would at least give some framework to him or her on kind of like what I see and kind of how I, this grand idea that I have or whatever. So anyway, thanks. I don't know if I was clear or made any impact there, but...
I, I think I heard an applause out there somewhere. That was good, thank you. Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so that got me on my roll. But, um, I want to see like more community building developments. I also, and this isn't necessarily building, but like retention pond versus detention pond. What is that? Is retention where the water stays, detention where it...
Yeah, yeah, you got it.
Okay. So I don't like those, the ones that the water drains out and it's just a massive hole in the ground, like in front of Jack Stack. I think it looks so tacky. And I see other cities doing it differently than what we're doing. I don't know what they're doing differently, but you don't see these massive holes everywhere. So I would like to, and I know Councilmember Lovell and I have kind of talked about that before, I would like to see us explore other options, if at all possible. Because I know that that's something that's mentioned a lot, too, by people that, that notice, well, they're hard not to notice, but, so that's one of the things. I don't know, I think Mr. Parks probably the one that knows all about that. But, um, and then, oh gosh, we've had a lot of discussions about all of this, so I feel like we have a lot of lists. This might be an overwhelming meeting next week. But, um, I know we've talked about the asphalt versus the concrete. I, I really love the look, like the look of concrete. I know that it's, what's that saying, six of one, half dozen of the other on what's, yeah, on what's better cost-wise. But I would like to see us incorporate more concrete, even, I feel like the parking lots, concrete parking lots and concrete in nice, like developments, they look good. The wider sidewalks, is that part of what we're going to be discussing, or no? Is that...
We, we can talk about a little bit of the site, the site items. I, I'm hearing a lot of interest in the overall site designs, more so than the building designs themselves. And I think really our focus is on the, the building materials and the architectural styles and everything associated with those. But I, I will say that I think the, the site design, the placemaking aspects of that all feed into what the architectural style is. And if you review a lot of the information in our current comprehensive plan, there is, there is a lot of this, I'll say aspirational items and ideas, they're, they're kind of laid out in the comprehensive plan that we have right now. And so, like it's been mentioned a few times, it's tricky to, to how you make it work and where do you take that next step? And I think that the conversation over all of these items reinforces that getting down to the ordinance level, which is what this conversation will lead to.
Yep. Councilmember?
Just one last thing also, to Councilmember Hodges' point, one thing I've noticed in a lot of other cities is, we allow a lot of really bright signs and a lot of really bright colors on, on some of the buildings, like Whataburger. And I feel like in some of the other cities, they allow the signs, but maybe not so many bright signs, like everywhere to kind of make it look not as uniform and nice. I don't know. So that, is that, is that a building one? Oh, good. Okay, thank you.
And just to, since it's been mentioned a few times, it's essentially prototype designs is what you're talking about, franchise designs and regulations associated with what you allow and what you don't allow from that prototype design standpoint.
I, I feel like nobody really uses signs anymore. Everyone just uses their Apple Maps or Google Maps and says like, "What's near me?" So I don't even know the purpose of a sign, like a big glowing sign, other than, I mean, our phones make it so easy, so I don't feel like that would be a hard one to incorporate. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Reader? Um, yeah, Councilmember Reader.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have two things, because all the other comments on the dais have been really excellent, glass and more green space. Not exorbitant amounts of green space, but more, and I think we can, I think that's going to be easily accomplish, accomplishable with the zoning changes that we've done, so.
Okay. I'll just add a couple things. The, one of the last comments, Councilmember Pryor was talking about the color, the signs. So I would like to know some options on that. And when I think of, different than what Councilmember Pryor was saying, I'm thinking more like Fifty Highway. How do we, is there a way for us to, because we've had so many improvements on that highway, so many, I'm, I'm really proud of that. All the, all the neighborhood centers, I'll call them, how they're prettied up. But then we have some areas that are still the old metal buildings, and there are some big, bright, yellow signs and such. And is there a way that we can, that we can put an overlay on that, Mr. Elam, or something along those lines, where we can try to moderate that? That's reasonable, because I'm, I'm also with Councilmember Shields, they should be able to do what they want with their business for the most part, as long as they meet our design standards, and we don't want to, I don't see how we could tell Whataburger to, they can't be orange. Yeah. So I think, though, that we could, we could have other things that go with it. I don't know what those, what those design standards are, but a classier look, you know, like I heard, brick. But also, we, we do allow metals, and they can look good, but we really have to control the colors and such. And I don't know how, what that palette looks like, if there's palettes that have been successful, color palettes and such. And then the other thing, so like an overlay, if that's a, if that's a possible thing for remodels and such. Although I do think we've had quite a bit of, a pretty big voice on these neighborhood centers when they did get remodeled. If we had objections, we could have. I'm just talking about more about, how do we, how do we get things in place so it's an easy decision? And then once, once it develops out twenty, thirty years over time, it's more uniform, so signage is a little bit more uniform. I think when you go to a certain, yeah, it is master planning, but like there's certain communities where, even like a Prairie Village, there's some areas where it just feels like for a few blocks, you're, it's, it's very quaint and charming in certain areas, and it's all the uniform signage. And I don't want to take, take away their ability to have their logos and things of that nature, but anything we can do to provide that kind of consistency so that it's a pleasant streetscape, if that makes sense. And then there was one more I was going to mention. Oh, I was going to go, I know we're not going to talk much about multifamily, but I just think if there's any way to create, if Mr. Chris can give any suggestions on design standards that we could consider as far as creating a little bit of depth on the multifamily. When we see specifically a fourplex, we just have a lot of fourplexes in our community that's the pinwheel design, where it's boom, 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 four in a row, and it's flat. And maybe that's pleasant to, you know, that Tudor design, that whatever colonial look, but I, I just don't think it fits the Midwest and doesn't fit Lee Summit. I, I would much rather see some depth on these, anything to create a welcoming or inviting look. So, there we go. Councilmember Pryor?
Oh, now I just forgot what I was going to say.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know. I will think of it, though.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shields, you're going to combat me whenever I'm limiting these people on what they can do, aren't you?
All, all I want to say is, I hear a lot of ideas, and I don't think any of them are bad, and I think people should, anyone who's, who's developing their property can incorporate any of these. But I, I really do think the more we put in place, the more risk we run of just driving up costs and making it more and more difficult to develop in Lee Summit. I, I appreciate that Councilmember Lovell said we may have to look at new incentive packages to make this happen, because I think if, if you do a lot of things that are going to make this more expensive, we're going to have to look at ways to make it still feasible to develop in Lee Summit, or just risk that there are folks that just don't want to bring their business here anymore. So that, like, that's a concern for me. And then the other one is just, what's aesthetically pleasing today is always going to look dated in twenty years, always, like...
Color palettes, true.
I mean, color palettes change, architectural styles change, people get bored, they move on. I mean, and, and downtown I absolutely love, but there was a period where it declined for a while, and they, they brought it back, which is wonderful. And I love, and I really do love what it looks like down here. Like, I live here for a reason. But I think that it's, I just inject a note of caution, especially when we're talking about really specific things like architectural styles and building materials, because whatever you pick today, there's just a really good chance that in twenty years, it's going to look dated, too. So maybe give people a little bit more flexibility, because it's all going to... So maybe give people a little bit more flexibility, because it's all going to age. So that's, that's all I want to say.
Yep. Very good. Councilmember Prior?
Thank you. And I, I do agree with Councilmember Shields on some of the stuff, except brick. I feel like even, even the old Methodist church, the outdated kind of color of brick is still, still within, I mean, it still looks good, even though it's, the color would be considered outdated. But is there anything currently, so there is a specific vape shop that is super lit up, and is there anything currently, like? Yeah. But is there anything currently, like, regulating the use of, like, super bright lights on a building to make you stand out?
On the outside of the building, yes.
Okay. Well, then, I'll send you the address. It's on the outside?
If they're on the outside of the building, then there's regulations associated with the sign code.
Starting to get scared that they're going to come over to my house because of all my Christmas lights next.
There's some exceptions for holiday decorations.
Oh, okay. Because I have, I, I don't know if you've seen it, but I've got a lot this year.
My house looks like Christmas Vacation. Like, it's, it's a lot, so, yeah.
Okay. Council, oh, I'm sorry, keep going. Are you good?
For right now.
Okay. Councilmember Rader?
I just want to, thanks, Mayor. I just want to agree with Councilmember Shields on cost, yes, of course. But I think that there are, I think we can come up with something that's classic and durable and practical. So I think that might be some of the goals that we have, is something like that, that makes sense. Not all, in some areas of our city, maybe there, it's more architectural, it's more this and that. In other parts of the city, no, maybe we don't, we don't, it's not as important. And I still think glass is really an overall classy look forever. So, I mean, and maybe it is more expensive, I don't know yet. But anyway, so I just wanted to add on to that. That is a very good point, well taken. Thank you.
Okay, how'd we do?
I think we did great. I think this is going to be really helpful overall. We'll send the video, and if anybody's got anything that they would like to share ahead of time, please send them, you can send them to me and we'll get them to the right, right people. And then it should be a really good conversation. And like Mayor stated, I think it's going to be a challenge to keep it within the time period that we've got allotted, for good reason.
Yep. All right, thank you. I'm sorry, but I have got to take a break. So we will come back in 10 minutes. This is a recess.
Welcome to the Lee Summit Sign Department. We are going to walk you through our process from start to finish. We make signs as needed here. It's not like we just go out into the field and place a speed limit sign here, no parking here. Our traffic engineers, they go through and they'll do field studies. They'll send us down an engineering work order for us to go out, place new signs or remove signs as needed. Coming from the material, our blanks come in and they're just aluminum blanks. We can put our white, our red, our, you know, our fluorescent yellow, green, whatever. And basically what it looks like is just that there. Throw it up into the roller. And once we got it covered, take it to our work table here and Tim will cut the corners, cut all the access off to where it's lined up right. As far as the plotter and the software that we use, there's a street name sign there and he's going to go ahead and print that out on the plotter so you can see the plotter and how it operates and runs. There are standards for the height, even just on letters on the sign blank. Basically what we have on the computer there is, it's pretty much set up to those. And it goes through, it's got a very small but sharp needle that goes through and cuts everything out, letter by letter. Once that's done cutting, our next stage would be bringing it over here. Currently picking out the sign letters right now. We call it weeding, or picking, or however you want to call it. Next, putting it on the transfer tape. Then after it's taped, we bring it over to the roller. That's where we apply it to the actual sign blank. And we'll roll it through one time just to get the air bubbles out. And the last stage is basically just taking the transfer tape off the front of it. And there's a finished product of the street name sign. We'll take you out to the field and show you our process that we go through. We're going to go out and follow our sign guys, get something installed for you. This is where we check our underground utilities. Tim, you got AT&amp;T?
AT&amp;T is back here.
EverG, Google, so we should be good to go. We normally put all of our stuff together out in the field. Then once the bases installed, we'll go ahead and put the post in there. We've come up to perfect. And that's how we do it. Simple, quick.
Traditionally, we think as police officers, those responding to law enforcement needs within the community. But honestly, we are there to serve our citizens and our citizens do go into crises. They do have mental health crises and we're being called to those scenes on a regular basis. In order to help serve those citizens better, we did initiate the Crisis Intervention Team Program. These are officers that are specially trained to de-escalate crisis situations. Recently, we've brought co-responders onto the scene, licensed, qualified, mental health professionals housed within our police department. And they respond with those officers directly to those scenes where a crisis is occurring so they can interact with that citizen and get them the help they need right there on that scene.
The co-responders are either a bachelor or master level in a behavioral health-related field. They wear plainclothes, they don't carry weapons or anything like that.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day, listen for, you know, those key words, mental health, behavioral health, crisis.
There's a lot of officers that just call for me. I have my own radio number.
I also have the ability to self-dispatch to them and say, 982, en route.
Officers en route, 914.
So typically I arrive after they've made it safe. I'll make contact and get kind of the rundown and then I just kind of jump right in.
Like, hey, you know, my name's Allison, I'm a mental health professional, I'm here to help you. I'm not here to take you to jail or arrest you.
Sometimes all a person needs is a voice, someone neutral, someone outside that, you know, can listen. I do a lot of safety planning, including family, their support network, who's close to you? If they're home alone, who can come over and hang out with you today? Can we lock away your sharps? Can we put up your meds? Do you need meds? Can we get you over to the urgent care to get you assessed for your medications? Some of them also are like, oh, I'm so glad you came, this made me feel so much better.
Our main goal as co-responders is to, one, get people connected to the services that they need and also divert from emergency rooms and jails.
And they almost get a different view of the police responding. That lets me know you care and the officers care.
Do you have a police, can we help you?
My husband has.
In 2020, we had 722 mental health-related calls for service. 2022, by that time, 1,479. These mental health-related calls for service are increasing. How we're responding to that is increasing the number of Crisis Intervention Team officers we have available, as well as the number of co-responders we have available to respond on these calls.
So what I think is important for the community to know about the co-responder program is that we're here, we exist. All you have to do when you call 911 is ask for us, you know, say, hey, I want a co-responder to respond to this, this crisis and we'll go. I was really struggling about eight years ago on my personal journey with mental health and I met some amazing social workers and amazing programs that have helped me get to where I am today. I really couldn't see myself doing anything else. We want to help and that's, that's what we love to do.
So I had a client, we got her call, she had some suicidal ideations and she really felt that she had nobody. And, you know, and getting to know her story and getting to know, who comes around and sees you? Well, then we found a support person and they responded immediately and we made a plan. I called back and checked on her in an hour and then I checked on her in two hours. We were able to get her into additional services to where she talks to someone every week or more. I just took a person that really just thought they had nobody and nobody would show up for them and show them you do. And you'll be amazed, who is in your corner if you just simply say, I need a little help.
When the person called on the phone, she said that, that there was a dinosaur walking down her road. Of course, we had to go out and check that out. We get out there and it was a big African tortoise, probably 60 pounds, walking down the road. And they walked, they really stand up tall, so I could see why she thought it was a dinosaur. I'm Rodney Wagner, I'm the manager of Lee Summit Animal Control. So as you can see, we get all sorts of animals here. You got some guinea pigs off to the side. All the windows up here are animals that are adoptable right now. Every one of these dogs is ready to go and ready for adoption. And the same thing with our cats over here. A lot of cool cats in here now, so. So this is our three-acre lot we have out back and this is where we do all the walk-in dogs, exercise. We also have a side yard off to the side over there, so we can let them run loose. They can run together and then we have what's called play groups. Kind of like having a bunch of kids. Here's our, our vet room. We have a vet that comes out twice a week. This is our Sally Port where we bring the animals into. This is one of our animal control trucks. And we can hold up to six animals. We have a lift on the other side to put big animals in. We actually have temperature gauges in here and in the truck to tell us how hot it is. Once it gets to a certain temperature, we bring all the animals back here immediately. So this actually has traps in it, but. We do a lot of wildlife trapping. I mean, a lot, so. Bats, pot-bellied pigs, horses, cows, emus, a lot of reptiles. We had a citizen one time that had over 200 reptiles in his basement. Caymans and alligators in here that are four or five feet long, you can't keep those. And people do and they're surprised when they can't keep them. I'm like, really, you're surprised you can't have an alligator in there? Our main goal here is public safety and also the safety of the animals. And we have very dedicated people back there and they definitely stay here for the love of the animals, which also includes getting them adopted out. We'll have about 4,000 impounded animals a year, probably about close to 2,000 are dogs and cats. The cats and dogs, when they get impounded here, they go on a five-day hold and then after the five days, if the owner doesn't show up, then we can put them up for adoption. Adopt a animal here is actually really simple. You just come in, look for whatever animal you're looking for, find the right pick. You have, you go to the adoption room up there and see if you get along with them, you spend as much time as you want to in there. From that point on, it's just a matter of making sure they're spay or neutered and all their vaccinations up to par and they're good to go. We have a very high adoption rate because we try everything our power to get animals adopted out. We have Heart of America, a humane society that we do a lot of adoptions through. And then we also have other groups. We have some people that literally will just look all over the country for somewhere for a dog to go. And we sent dogs up into South Dakota, North Dakota, Washington State. So it's actually, it's a huge united effort to get all these animals home.
Tarzan's got lots of energy.
Hazel's got a weird pout.
Bellbell, she wants nothing to do with the other cats, she'll kind of get her grumpy face going.
And the good thing about the people here is that they get all their friends to get animals, too. All of us have probably the limit of all the animals that we can have at home. You know, they are huge animal lovers. If it was up to the people here, we'd have 15 cats running around in here. We had a citizen one time out there and he was bathing his two nine-foot-long boa constrictors in the front yard. Apparently I was, I was gardening some, some attention and so we went out there and had to talk to him about that. Well, I do this job? Oh, dude, I love this job. I grew up on a farm and taking care of that many animals, you can't help but like animals. This is just like fancy farming. You're just bringing the animals in here, taking care of them and, and finding them homes and, yeah, absolutely animal lover.
Welcome back, everyone. We're going to bring this meeting back to order. And we're going to start off with a resolution read by our clerk, Ms. Tricia Fowler R. Curry. Would you please read, Resolution 2417?
Resolution number 2417, a resolution authorizing the mayor to appoint successor directors to the I-470 and VU High Community Improvement District.
Thank you. Have a motion to adopt by Councilmember Shields and a seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the votes. And that passes 7-0. Before we read this next one, I would like to request that, this came from Finance and Budget, right? No, Rules, I mean, Rules. Councilmember Shields, would you kind of give just an overview, because I was going to make a request on this one before we read it?
Thank you, Mayor. So we discussed in Rules a mayoral succession plan, because as it stands now, we didn't have anything in our ordinances that clarified what would happen if the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem were both unavailable. And so especially in the case of a true emergency, say we have a tornado and the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, for whatever reason, aren't available, we don't want the attorneys to spend all day wrangling over who has the ability to sign an emergency declaration. So we thought it would be good to have something in our statutes addressing this. We had a discussion, Rules Committee, about whether this should only be used for emergencies. So for example, if the mayor has a planned absence where he is, you know, the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem are at a conference, could he or she in the future, who knows, appoint a successor at that time? Or would this apply in all cases? And the consensus of the committee was to have it apply in all cases and to have it go in order of seniority. So the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem and then council members by seniority. And in the event that you have the same amount of seniority, then by, alphabetically by last name. We also discussed the possibility of doing it by committee chairs or some other method, but seniority was the kind of, what the committee landed on. So I think that's still a good discussion for the council to have possibly. And also just to clarify, and I'll double-check with Mr. Head that I'm not mistaken, this doesn't change anything about how the Mayor Pro Tem is appointed and it doesn't change that he's the first in line after the mayor, correct? Okay. Sure. Okay. So this really only is, is in effect if both mayor and Mayor Pro Tem aren't available to serve for some reason, so.
Okay. And the reason I asked that she give us that is because I asked her, I was like, so, I mean, we have, not with an ordinance, but we have kind of had a succession with regard to, you've got the Mayor Pro Tem. And then they typically, in the past, they've asked me, like, what's the, what's the order? And I have given an order, but it's, I don't know, I've never written down an order. And I don't think that we should leave it to that type of situation. I think it should be something that's in an ordinance that establishes the order. I just don't think it's, I just don't agree with the seniority. I think it should be by chair, whatever, whatever order you want to go with by the chairs. I think operational chairs are like Finance and Budget or Public Works. But I just would, I would just like to see Rules reconsider it to make it something along those lines. Councilmember Lovell?
I don't have a problem with that. I wasn't asked, though, like, with seniority, is it like current term seniority or would it be total terms? Because Trish would be obviously the outlier there, like, would she be most senior or is it consecutive? You'd have to clarify, I guess.
I did talk to her before she left and she said she's totally fine with reconsidering it. Doesn't mean she, she.
Well, that was all I was bringing up, that clarification on that. But I'm totally good with either. If you think that's a better path to go, I say we just list the different committees in an order and put the chairperson there.
I don't mean to be conversational, but I just know that, like, if you look at the federal government, they usually have it by, I don't know about the state, but there's, there's a procession, is that what you call it? Mr. Head? Succession, yeah. And it's, it's more based on those types of things.
There, there is an order of succession at the federal government, at the federal level, of course, it's the president, vice president, president pro tem, no, I'm sorry, Speaker of the House, president pro tem of the Senate, and then the cabinet secretaries in the order in which the cabinet offices were created. I mean, that, that's what it is at the, at the federal level. And if you know at the federal level, anytime there's large gatherings, there's always the one person who doesn't go to the gathering. With ours, we didn't actually talk. With ours, we didn't actually talk about whether it would be, whether it would be current-term seniority or total seniority. We did not have that discussion. I think I would probably apply a seniority in terms of the current, not the current term necessarily, but the current two terms, because each council member is allowed two terms potentially, an eight-year period before they have to set out for a period of time with the term limits we have. So I would probably look at that. So someone who'd been, who's on their second term would have more seniority automatically than someone who's on a first term. But we did not discuss that. That might be, that might be another good item for discussion in rules as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rader?
Thank you, Mayor. I sit on Rules Committee, and my thought behind the seniority thing was simply seniority and experience. And so if we've lost our mayor and our mayor pro tem to whatever situation, and they're not. I think I want somebody that's had a little bit more experience on the council. And I would say that whoever has been on it longest would be my qualification for that. Chairs don't always, you know, they're not always as experienced as somebody that's been on the council for years or six years or whatever it may be, or almost eight years. So that was kind of my thought behind it, was just experience. If we're in a difficult situation, then I think, just think that, not that a chair wouldn't necessarily have it, but if it's a newer chair on a committee, then they may not. So that was kind of my thought behind that. Thanks, Chair. I mean, thanks, Mayor. Sorry about that.
All right, thank you. I was just going to say, I was, when I became mayor, I hadn't been on council. So I do understand it, but it's probably why I don't weigh it as much. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm really good with whatever. I understand, like, I do feel like Finance and Budget typically, just given that committee, they're typically not a new council member. It's typically an experienced council member, from what I've seen. I'm good with, when you say more discussion, would it go back to the Rules Committee for discussion, or would that be?
I was going to request Rules discusses a little more.
Okay. I'm good with really whatever. I understand the importance of both. I know that, I feel like the Rules Committee, I mean, not the Rules Committee, the Finance and Budget Committee, because wasn't that the discussion, the Finance and Budget one being the mayor pro tem? Was that the?
I don't know. Did you discuss that?
I don't think we actually, if you don't mind me. No, go ahead. We didn't discuss if it were to go by chairs, what committees would be in order. I sort of assumed that it would be kind of the main committees, either Public Works, Finance and Budget, CDC, that those would probably be the first ones. But I assumed it would be like we would rank them, and then it'd be the vice chairs. Like, it's very, I just want to say, like, it's very unlikely that we're ever going to, other than just planned absences, that this is ever going to be an issue. It's very unlikely that you're going to get deep into that succession order. I just, to me, it's more important that we have something on the books so that just in case there is an emergency, there's not a bunch of dilly-dallying, because I can't think of a better word right now, and that action can be taken. So I'm happy to discuss this further in Rules. I personally liked the idea of going by the committee chairs, but I'm open to whatever the consensus of the council is. I just think it's good to have something on the books. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, Mr. Head, you were, you went through something similar, but you didn't have to make this decision, but you do need to be prepared. So that's why I would just like, just some more discussion on it as well.
Yeah, from my perspective, as someone who's been in the emergency situation, we didn't have the situation where we had to locate city manager or mayor. They were both available, so I haven't really had to do that. As Councilmember Shields, Chair of Rules, indicates, from my preference, I don't care how you do it, but I really would like to have a rule just in case the off chance something does happen.
So is it okay if we send this back? Thank you for taking it back and reconsidering, and then we can knock it out. All right, that would take us then to item 8B. Councilmember Hodges, would you please read bill number 24-216?
Yes. I move to second reading, bill number 24-216, an ordinance approving amendment number three to the budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, as adopted by ordinances 9936, 9937, 9938, 9939, and 9940, by amending the authorized expenditures for the city.
Thank you. I have motion to move to second reading, bill number 24-216 by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. I need one more. Thank you. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Unanimous, goes to second reading. Councilmember Hodges, would you please read for adoption?
I move for the adoption of bill number 24-216, an ordinance approving amendment number three to the budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, as adopted by ordinances 9936, 9937, 9938, 9939, and 9940, by amending the authorized expenditures for the city.
Thank you. I have motion to adopt bill number 24-216 by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. That vote, that bill is adopted. Thank you. Councilmember Shields, would you please read bill number 24-217?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading, bill number 24-217, an ordinance authorizing the award of bid number 2024030 for the purchase and installation of landscaping, rock, and lawn irrigation systems for fire stations four and five to rise in lawn and landscape LLC in the amount of $87,315, and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement before the same by and behalf of the city.
Thank you. I have motion to move to second reading, bill number 24-217 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. That bill moves to second reading. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor. And I move for adoption of bill number 24-217, an ordinance authorizing the award of bid number 2024030 for the purchase and installation of landscaping, rock, and lawn irrigation systems for fire stations four and five to rise in lawn and landscape LLC in the amount of $87,315, and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for the same by and behalf of the city.
Thank you. I have motion to adopt, bill number 24-217 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. And it's adopted unanimously. Thank you. Next is proposed ordinances, first reading, Councilmember Shields, would you please read bill number 24-218?
I move for second reading.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. We were going to have Mr. Bushak come forward on this one. No, we removed the next one. Mr. Bushak, would you tell us what's going on here? We've seen this before, but just please, it's an, this is an activation as well?
Yes, sir.
It's another activation of a revenue bond.
That's correct. So David Bushak, Chief Counsel of Economic Development and Planning. You heard the conceptual presentation back in October of '22. And then last year, the city council approved an ordinance that approved the Chapter 100 Plan. And this is the ordinance that would approve the bond documents to implement the plan that you've already approved. And I can go through the particulars if you'd like, but that's a simple summary of what this action is.
Yeah, when people see that we're doing something, you know, this large, especially on multifamily and such, we need to know that, they need to know that this is like a few steps down the road that we've already gone, so.
Correct. Yes, this is the implementation stage for the Chapter 100 Plan that you've already approved.
All right. We'll just stay close. Councilmember Shields, would you please read bill number 24-218?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading, bill number 24-218, an ordinance authorizing the City of Lee Summit, Missouri to issue taxable industrial development revenue bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $26,105,000 in connection with the Douglas Station Apartments project, and authorizing certain documents and actions in connection therewith.
Thank you. We have motion to move to second reading, bill number 24-218 by Councilmember Shields. I need a second. Thank you. Seconded by Councilmember Pryor. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Passes five to two. And we do not have, the next item was taken off before the meeting. That takes us to committee reports. Rader?
To Mayor. Okay. Liaison to Parks, and I have a report. Parks Board had a JMPAC meeting on December 4th. First of all, really exciting for them. Legacy for Parks Foundation presented them a $5,000 to the Parks Board for additional programs and fundings for projects they may have. So if you don't know, the Legacy for Lee Summit Parks Foundation serves the community by procuring funds and resources to develop, enhance, and sustain Lee Summit Parks and Recreation amenities. They are working on the Longview Pickleball Complex. For all you pickleball people out there, they said they would have their master plan moving forward in January. That's exciting. We have, the Mouse Creek Trail is moving full speed ahead, and I'll bring you up to snuff on that. The Mouse Creek Trail consists of a one and a half miles of paved trail. It features a water crossing and a stream crossing. And it's on the east trail, will begin north of Hook Road and Prior Road and continue west to Eagle Creek Park. That trail improvements will then continue at the west end of Eagle Creek Park and continue on to the Park West neighborhood property near Sampson Road in Lee Summit. Additional information on that is, did you know Lee Summit Parks and Rec was awarded a $250,000 recreational trails program grant for the future trail along Mouse Creek in the South Lee Summit? The grant was given through the Missouri National Natural Resources Division of the State Park, which is the largest amount LSPR has ever received. So I think they think we're special, and we are. And that's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. So at Finance and Budget Committee, we have continued to discuss our fund balance policy and look at some projects for possible funding. And so just continue to encourage my colleagues, if there's any projects that you think would be great to see some movement on that those funds might be used for, please let me know, and I'm happy to bring those into the discussion. And then Lee Summit Economic Development Council met today, and we continue to discuss the president search. The job posting is out and is going to be published in a couple more locations. I believe they're going to continue accepting applications through January 10th and then see if there are qualified candidates. It looks like there've been several candidates already, so hopeful that there'll be some good candidates there. But if anyone knows anyone that would be good for that, definitely encourage them to submit their resume. And I think that is all that I have for the moment.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to council comments. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you, Mayor. We had a public comment today, and it was regarding Lee Summit Elementary. And that whole entire issue has weighed heavily on my heart since I found out about it, I guess, November 1st, after the people, Lee Summit Elementary staff, found out about it. But I just wanted to see if I could maybe pass it to you to kind of address that public comment, if you're comfortable with that. I know I didn't tell you beforehand. Just because I feel like so many people think that we have a say in what the school district does. And I've been, I've gotten some pretty nasty emails from people accusing me of taking money and accusing me of having a say and not using my voice when the vote is up to us on council. So I was wondering if I could refer it to you to.
Yeah, it's a tough, it's a tough responsibility for elected officials. We try to work with each other and be cooperative and collaborative with each different jurisdictions. But we actually, we do have a voice for the city council and for our citizens and such. But when it comes to decisions with the school board, and when it comes to decisions with the city, we would like to see the school board stay in their lane and discuss their issues because they represent a constituency. And then we try to stay in our lane and not interfere with their process because they're good at processes too, just like we are, and not act like we are in a position of authority. So when we do speak, that's why I didn't say anything after he spoke, is I was like, well, I didn't want to make him feel bad that we don't have a say. I just wanted to respect his comments. But the reality is, it's really difficult for us to come out of, you know, our, take our city council hat off and try to be a citizen and have the same voice that a citizen does. We do have that right. There are ways to express it, but we especially don't want to do it from the dais. So we want to do it from, you know, I always talk about, even during election seasons, like, your friends will all call you and say, how do I vote? You know, who do I vote for on school board? I mean, I try to help my friends, but I don't, I don't necessarily, I especially don't do it from the spot. And I try to be, I try to pick issues to support. And I think that where it really crosses over is when a decision, where it really is the hardest. This is a hard one because it's emotional, and it's an elementary school, and it's right downtown. But it can even be harder when it affects the entire community. Like, this is a big city and 100,000 people, right? So when we make a decision and it affects the schools, it's got to be really, really challenging for their school board to not want to chime in as to what we're doing when it's, when we're talking about 100,000 citizens and vice versa. They even have more of a population. They have a bigger footprint than we do. I think, I think the best, the best thing I can tell the citizens, and Mr. Head, make sure I'm correct here. If I don't say something right, just correct me, is legal. But I think the way we can have a positive effect on these types of decisions is to engage the way we have with our meetings with them, show up to other events, and pull those board members aside and tell them what your opinion is. You know, it's, that's okay. I mean, we, we have experience from our position. We make decisions about millions upon millions of dollars. We do lots of tear downs and rebuilds. We also do renovations. So we, we do know what we're doing. And so I think that that's the way to do it. And it's just really hard to not respond when people are going to accuse you of having an influence on a decision, a negative influence from their perspective on a decision that we have, we have had no engagement on. So in this situation, we have had no engagement with the school district about what they're doing with Lee Summit Elementary, other than them disclosing to us what their plans were and that they were going to engage with their citizens. So I back you. I know that you, I know that you would love to do a lot more and say a lot more, but, you know, to make, to stay in alignment with us, you're just, you're just going to have to do it on the lowdown with your friends. And not, not from the spot up here, so. I'm sorry. I wish, I wish, I wish we had more influence than that, but that's. And I will tell you this, one last thing to end on that. When people don't like things about what we're doing, and they say it affects the schools, I will tell you what, I'm pretty, pretty strong to push back and say, if you don't like the way the schools are doing something, you need to go hold those elected board members accountable. And that's, that's what I'm talking about when they're saying we're overcrowding their schools and such. Their job is to use all that money that they get to make sure that they're not overloading the, overloading the schools and not having too large of ratios. And I, because I'm a big, strong believer in not having too, and I believe in having smaller student-to-teacher ratios, if at all possible. And I would, I just know how important that is, being a former educator. So I'm a proponent for that, but I can't, we can't affect it from this, we can't make our decisions based on, based on the school district not using their dollars wisely. We have to trust that they're using their dollars wisely. So I'm sorry, that's way more than probably what you wanted, but Mr. Head, did that, was that all? Okay, I stayed in my lane.
I also wanted to say that I do, I am, I'm grateful that he showed up and used his voice, and I respect everything that he said. But I just wanted to make it completely clear that we don't have authority in how the school board chooses to vote on this. I guess December 19th, maybe? That we don't, we don't have any say in how they choose to vote on this.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's good. I'm glad you brought it up. This is council comments. Did you want to? Oh, I think you were going to say something, but you're going to let Staff Roundtable go first? Okay, I was like waiting. I was like, okay. There was something I was going to say on Council. There was something I was gonna say on council roundtable. Oh, next week, we've got the joint meeting with the planning commissioners, so it's an important meeting. We will end that meeting off, or end the year off with that meeting, and I wanted to make a special request that we start this new tradition of making Councilmember Shields read all the ordinances afterwards, so that we can get through the evening quicker. So keep your voice intact. Yeah, we have a bunch of ordinances to read, so I thought we would just let her read them all, so that, yes, just for the, the last meeting of the year. The last meeting of the year, the last meeting of the year, you read all the meetings so that we can go home a little bit earlier. Okay, thank you. Okay, then Staff Roundtable. Ms. Weber.
Someone taller normally sits there after leaning really far in. Just a couple of things. One, since we're wrapping up the year, some reminders. If you still need last minute Christmas gifts for folks living here in Lee Summit or from Lee Summit, remember that we have a marketplace here in City Hall, and you can buy LS branded things from scarves to Post-it notes. Everything is $5 to $25, that includes tax. So if you forgot your mother-in-law, or you forgot something on the way to a neighborhood gift exchange, we're open 8 to 5, Monday through Friday. Just swing in and pick it up, they've got some great stuff. If, as you're cruising into the new year, you, one of your resolutions is to be more involved and give back to the community, remember that applications for our Citizen Leadership Academy closes this Friday. It's a great opportunity to learn about the community they're in, and also see how you might wanna be involved in the future. If you already know that you wanna be involved, we are still taking applications for numerous boards and commissions as we do throughout the year. All you have to do is go to our city website. Don't worry about the navigation, just type "board application" into the search bar, it'll take you right there. If you're also looking to wrap up your year with last minute charitable donations, don't forget that we have a Lee Summit Community Foundation that helps fund projects for animal control, public safety, arts and culture, Mayor's charitable contributions. You can make those donations by going to the Truman Hartman and Community Foundation, to their giving portal, and selecting the Lee Summit Community Foundation. So hopefully that wraps up some to-do list things on your list as councilmembers or the residents that are watching. Mark had one message he wanted me to share with you, one, he apologizes he can't be there tonight, he's not ill. He promised that I give this message in Mark number of words, not Crystal number of words, so I'll do my best. He just wanted to give the council an update on moving forward from the council planning retreat. I remember you guys wrapped up retreat, came up with big rocks, medium rocks, small rocks. You received a report from Everest Drive a couple weeks ago, and tasked the city manager with going back to staff and creating some proposed action plans or proposed ways of moving forward, maybe some options on how to address certain things at a macro level. He'll be working on that with staff, he's bringing that back to council around the first of the year. This isn't, here's what staff says we need to do, it's, here's staff's idea of how to get us started. It'll be a discussion with the council for your input and feedback, but if you have something right now in your brain that is burning a hole in your mental load, and if you could tell it to him right now, and you could move on with your holidays, don't hesitate to reach out to Mark and pass that on, he'll share it with his staff, so we can incorporate that into that planning process. If you don't, and don't wanna think about it until January, bring it forward, don't. It will all be a time for the council to discuss it then, so really don't feel like there's homework to do in the meantime, but if you really have something that's just burning a hole, now's the time to pass it on to him. That's it, Mayor.
I know that Councilmember Raider was gonna speak to one portion of the retreat. Councilmember Raider.
Thank you, Mayor. So to further the next phase of the housing rock of, of that, I am forming a task force. This task force is an action group, it's not a discussion group, and we're going to work on diverse housing choices, including owner-occupied multifamily, workforce, attainable housing, and senior housing, as well as continuing to streamline the permitting and approval process. I have, currently I have public sector, I've reached out to public sector, who, people, builders, developers, some HBA members, business leaders, who are interested and want to be involved, and then I would welcome anyone on the council or others who would like to join in on this group. It's gonna be an exciting group, and I'm excited, so I'm not gonna wait until January. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. So, Ms. Weber, we need to just, I just need to be able to follow up and help facilitate and set up a task force I'm for, a task force on housing. It's just, I just wanna make sure when we form them, we do them the right way. Okay. Very good. That's important, it's just important to, to go through the, the process with, that we, that we follow as a council, as a legislative body, when we're doing the task force, so that we have buy-in from the council. Okay. Is that it? Okay, so we're gonna go into a closed session, so I'm gonna need someone to read us in, councilmember? Or, okay, Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. Pursuant to section 61021,1 of the revised statutes, the state of Missouri pertaining to legal actions, causes of action, or litigation involving a public governmental body in any confidential or privileged communication between a public governmental body or its representative and its attorneys, in pursuant to section 61021,2 of the revised statutes of the state of Missouri pertaining to the leasing, purchase, or sale of real estate by a public governmental body or a public knowledge of the transaction might adversely affect a legal consideration, therefore I move for closed session.
We have motion to go into closed session by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, can I get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Shields?
Aye.
Councilmember Hodges?
Aye.
Councilmember Raider? Councilmember Pryor?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Baird?
Aye, thank you.